Good afternoon, this is Gladys, how are you?
Good thanks, how are you Gladys?
Okay, good, we have you on speaker, so we'll get started in about a minute.
Thank you.
Yep, they're here. Yep. And then, and the Maximiliano's in front. Yep, they're here.
Good evening, everybody. You ready? All right, it is now 5:31, good evening, everybody, welcome to the November 13th meeting for the Glendale Elementary School Board meeting. Ms. Segada-Jones, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Good evening, President Martinez, members of the board, no, there are none.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Mr. Haramio, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Please join me in a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please rise. All right, jumping right into our special recognition, our Just Because Awards, Ms. Segada-Jones.
Yes, good evening, President Martinez, members of the board, if we can step down, we'll be, again, those recognition, uh, recognition.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for being here. For those of you that are new, what we do each month is we select a, an employee and a student randomly selected, just to say thank you for choosing GSD, and we call it the Just Because Award, and we're able to do that because of our Gusta Foundation. So this month, we have our employee, and the employee is Lucinda Samora from Discovery. She's the office staff at Discovery, and she cannot be here at this time, so could I please have Discovery family come on up and let's recognize Lucinda? And we'll put her face in there, how's that? But we have her things, if you'll make sure she gets them, and if you can make sure, Ms. Molina, that she takes a picture for us, and then we'll put that on our Instagram, so... We'll just put her face on you. Great, thank you, congratulations. Our student this month comes from American School, and his name is Maximiliano Correa Piña, could you please come up, please? Acérdate por favor. Thank you, Maximiliano. Y también la familia, por favor. Okay, este es un cartel para, para su casa, para entrar a su casa. Luego esta noche vamos a comer a su casa. Necesita saludo, sonrio en sus pijamas. Está bien? No chonis, pijamas. Sí, y estos son los dulces también para usted y para su familia. Mucho gusto.
Thank you.
Sí, y también gracias por elegir GSD. Y usted tiene un bien estudiante muy excelente.
Muchas gracias.
He wants the candy, mom. Max, we're very proud of you, okay? All right, remember, sign goes in the yard, I come by about 9:30, I honk, you wave, sonrio, pijamas, no chonis, got it? Got it, all right. Max, otra vez. Porquiera. You're welcome. Gracias señora. Now, the next part of our recognitions, we have, Pat Kaiser is with us, with Kiwanis, and he's going to, two awards we always give each month, a student award, and then we have a school award, so, Pat.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, my name is Patrick Kaiser, I'm the, with the Kiwanis Club of Glendale. Tonight, I am honored to recognize the Kiwanis Club of Glendale Superintendent Student of the Month for the month of November 2025. The reason that this award is so special is that this student has been chosen by the superintendent for their hard work, passion for helping others, and helping to make our community a better place. This month's winner is Mitchell Jimenez. Now we get to embarrass you with all the, all the kind words that everyone has said about you. Mitchell exemplifies the Mustang way in everything he does, going above in both leadership and kindness. A core contributor to our weekly announcements, Mitchell brings not only creativity and commitment, but also a contagious energy that uplifts everyone around him. Mitchell is an integral part of the Mustang Minute Mosaic Club, where his natural kindness and dedication shine through. Whether he realizes it or not, his positive presence spreads, kindness to others, simply by being himself. He consistently demonstrates respect and responsibility by showing up prepared and ready to work, and always striving to represent Desert Spirit with pride. His willingness to try new things and contribute fresh and fun ideas has elevated our announcements and brought sense of joy to our school community. Mitchell's infectious laugh and kind heart create a welcoming atmosphere wherever he goes. He is caring, empathetic, and deeply civic-minded. These qualities led to his well-deserved selection to represent Desert Spirit on the Superintendent's Student Advisory Council this year. We couldn't be prouder to have such a thoughtful, motivated, and community-focused student leader on our campus. Mitchell is always a shining example of excellence, and in honor to recognize all that he brings to Desert Spirit. Congratulations, Mitchell. We have a certificate for you. We also have, from the Kiwanis Club of Glendale, a $50 gift card to Walmart, so you can go pick up whatever you like. We encourage you to keep up the good work. Are you embarrassed yet? Good job.
Come on, Mitchell.
We're not done, you have to get pictures now, so...
The family, please. And Desert Spirit family as well. Mitchell, we're so proud of you, we have some chocolate for you, and also for your family.
Congratulations. Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome, thank you so much, very proud of you, Mitchell. Mitchell, we have one more thing, Mitchell? Mitchell, we have one more thing, you get to choose from the treasure box, basket as well. Whatever you'd like, Mitchell. Oh, yeah. Hey, that's our theme this year, good for you, all right.
Congratulations. Last year, in collaboration with GESD Superintendent, we created the Kiwanis Inspiring Change School of the Month Award. This award recognizes a school in the district for inspiring positive change in education and community through vision, action, and innovation. This month's winner is Sunset Vista. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now we embarrass you too. There's your trophy. This school is on a great trajectory in terms of their signature program, academics, and overall school community. Principal Accolay and her entire staff worked diligently with the students and families to ensure all students have multiple opportunities to learn in a variety of means, and to showcase their learning processes consistently, through transparent collaboration and stakeholder leadership. Students are seen as partners in their learning and leadership. Of particular note, upper-grade students publicly showcased their speaking and selling skills as they performed as Shark Tank entrepreneurs, selling historical innovations to a group of potential investors. The parents, staff, and other students in attendance were highly supportive, celebratory, and professional, truly balancing high expectations, community involvement, and performance assessment. Lessons like this are not alone at Sunset Vista, these type of events are very inspiring and support student innovation. Sunset Vista will proudly display our traveling trophy at their school for the next month, and congratulations, great job. Thanks.
Do we have any more, is this, okay. Thank you, Pat. Okay, our next award is each month, we look at student attendance and who has the best attendance, and all schools are really making great progress with student attendance, I couldn't be more proud of the work that you are doing, so keep it up, and this month, the award goes to Discovery. So, Ms. Molina, thank you. Great, and let's take some pictures of Discovery. Thank you.
We have one more award, as we like to do, and this is an employee recognition award, it's from AZOAS organization, and they call it the Tolo, the Tolo Corazon Award, and this award goes to employees across the districts, across the state, from AZOAS, that really show outstanding stewardship, leadership, and the work that they do within the community. So we're very proud to honor tonight Ulises Montes, a human resource technician, so Ulises.
Very few of these awards are given out across the state, and we couldn't be more proud of Ulises, he's had the award for about a week, we told him that he had to bring it back, and if you, if you don't know Ulises, you know, he's, he's a wonderful employee, and he really does a lot for, for our district, you know, he's always volunteers, you see him, and he's coached, he's refereed, keeps score, he's that move, market on the move, you know, he does all the health care things, we couldn't ask for a more dedicated employee. But also, one of the things that he likes to, one of his, you know how people are often known for what they say, a quote or something, he has one, it's, "What do you think?" We know what that means, "What do you think?" So today, earlier, we were in the office, and Mr. Barrigan walked in, and they were talking about this no-shave thing, and so Mike says, "Ulises, are you doing no-shave November?", and Ulises says, "What do you think?" And I thought, "Whoa, okay, that's interesting", but yeah, I don't know, it looks, they both look the same to me, so I don't know if they're doing the no-shave thing or not, and it's something about if they clean it, and they don't clean it, and if it grows long, and you can't touch the length, and, I don't know, it's a no thing, shave November, whatever, you got an award, we're proud of you. So don't shave it, because it must be good luck, right? Thank you again, Ulises, for everything you do for this district, we couldn't be more happy for you. Could we, could we have the HR family come up, please, we have some HR people? Jackie, isn't Melissa here? Debbie, who else? Thank you, Ulises. That ends our recognitions for this month.
At this time, the governing board will consider voting to recess the regular meeting in order to convene to executive session for the following purpose, in accordance with Arizona Revised Statute 38-43103A3, for discussion, consultation with the attorneys of the public body to obtain legal advice regarding employee compensation procedures and related issues. Is there a motion?
I move to recess the regular meeting in order to convene executive session, as stated.
Your second?
I'll second.
Mr. Haramio, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Bartels, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel, how do you vote?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, we are now in executive session.
Parents, thank you again for coming, now, you're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to go home, so thank you so much.
This is Monica.
Hi, Ms. Pimentel. It's Gladys. You're on.
Hi, Gladys. Thank you.
Thanks.
We got Monica back?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to reconvene back to regular session?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Harameo?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Bartels?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're now back in regular session. Ms. Segada-Jones, are there any calls to the public this evening?
President Martinez, members of the board, no, there are not.
All right. That. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there are any questions or comments on the consent agenda items? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Mr. Harameo, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Bartels?
Aye.
Ms. Pimentel?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Moving on to our reports and information items, the 2025 school and district letter grades presentation. Ms. Segada-Jones?
Yes, President Martinez, members of the board, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Angelique Saez. She's the Director of Critical Instruction.
Governing Board President Martinez, members of the board, I am excited to be able to share some exciting news with you about our progress and this year's letter grades. So here's just another reminder about the where our letter grades are calculated from and where we get our percentages. So the majority of our points come from the growth component. Thirty percent comes from proficiency, ten percent for our English language learners, and then ten percent for acceleration readiness. Each of those categories, here's just kind of a breakdown of how we get those points. So proficiency, again, that's thirty percent of our overall calculation. Students get proficiency points for scoring partially proficient and above. They get more points the higher they score out of those proficiency levels. We get those for both ELA and math. The growth component is fifty percent. That is to really monitor our progress and track students from where they were the previous year to this current year on their AASA. And it's an exciting part, I guess, because it helps us track their progress even when students have not yet mastered the standard. So it's a great way to keep us on track. We get ten percent of those points from our ZELA data, five percent for proficiency, and five percent for growth. Ten percent comes from acceleration readiness. You can get that in a multiple ways. So you can achieve that by either decreasing your eighth grade math minimally proficient, increasing your eighth grade math highly proficient, decreasing your third grade ELA by improving your chronic absenteeism from the previous year, by having a higher percentage of your sped students that are in like in inclusion programs within the schools, and then through our diverse population data. We can earn up to three bonus points on our science for our fifth graders and our eighth graders. And then we also can have two bonus points if your percentage of special education students is higher than the statewide average. Here you will see this year's cut scores. They have not changed from last year. It is important to note that there is no rounding up with any of the letter grades. Overall, this year, Glendale Elementary School District was a B district. Here's a breakdown of our schools. We have three schools that are a C, Landmark, Menz and Dick, and Bicentennial South. Six that are a B, Desert Spirit, American, Horizon, Smith, Sunset Vista, and Jack. And then three As, we have Discovery, and our new As, Challenger and Burton. Currently, Glendale Elementary Online is in the appeal process through ADE based on some discrepancies in that data. So hopefully, we'll be able to provide more information on that to you very soon. Here is just a table of all of the schools, their letter grades, and then the point totals that they earned for this past year. And then you will see the school letter grades as progression through time. And then here's just a snapshot of our district compared to local elementary school districts that are in our surrounding areas.
That list is not in order. It's only in order in alphabetical order. It's not by points or anything.
So if you look at the percentage, we are actually in the higher part of, if you did rank them, of the percentages of districts that have A schools and B schools. So that is exciting news. And then we wanted to note this, these are some of the charter schools that are around in the area. There are two charter schools that are in the boundaries of Glendale Elementary School District. One of them is now just in its second year, so they do not have a letter grade for the previous year. But the one that is highlighted is within our boundaries again, and it is on Forty-third and Glendale. And as you can see, they are A-B, so they are not outperforming our district. And then here are some next steps. We had all of the principals met with our district leadership for their quarterly data meetings and their next step discussions. Those happen after every quarter. We are working really hard and really intentional on improving our tier-one instructional practices. And that really feeds into a lot of the action steps that we are taking this year. With that is looking really closely at our proficiency maps and our tier-one instruction and how we have that paced out. We are supporting our instructional coaches, our achievement advisors, with their, I guess, their strategies and the way that they support our teachers with their coaching cycles and helping them really build their capacity so that they impact our teachers and then in turn impact our students. We are providing targeted support to some collaborative teams across the district. Our site professional development has been focused on our tier-one instruction as well as our district professional development opportunities. Of course, our principals are doing many walkthroughs and providing feedback when they see evidence of effective tier-one instruction or if they have support or suggestions on how we can continue to improve. And then we also are having a real targeted focus on our special education students and our ELD students through data analysis and support. And something that I think is really going to help us this year is we're working closely with those departments to align our PD that we're giving our JENED teachers to, we're also providing that for our special education teachers so that they have the same framework for what is expected in our tier-one instruction, but just being adapted to how that would look in a special education classroom. So we're excited to start really making sure that all of those things are really cohesive as we continue our work this year. Any questions?
I don't know about anybody else, but it's exciting to see Discovery had ninety-one points plus, so we know we can hit that mark. We had two more schools enter that A realm, so that's awesome. And, you know, it's just amazing to watch how much work has gone in and we're seeing that evidence. So I'm very, very proud of this district and the staff that makes these decisions every day to, you know, help our students achieve what we all know they are capable of. Thank you so much.
We couldn't be more proud of our students and their accomplishments, but also, you know, it's the teachers who are in those classrooms every day teaching. We have some teachers in the audience. Would you please stand? Teachers in the audience, please stand. We appreciate what you do each day. We know your job is very difficult and thank you and for your accomplishments. We also, with that, our school administrators, principals and assistant principals, please stand. And we believe here in Glendale Elementary School District, we all play a role in student achievement with our support staff and everyone else. Please stand and be recognized. I do not see Tom stand or Gladys stand, and you play a critical role in that. As well as I do not see my executive team stand, and you play a role in that. And again, the governing board, you play a role in that again. So thank you for your leadership. Could not be more proud of you.
It is, it is really nice to see these grades sort of come along over the time that, at least I've been here, kind of see them inch up and inch up. And we get a little bit, a little bit better every single year and looking, I mean, we just missed it with Horizon, just missed the A by a couple, a couple of small points. Sunset Vista right behind them, Jack, Glendale American, you guys are. guys are within, within spitting distance right there, so just keep working it. You've all made tremendous progress and we're very proud of you, and it makes it easy for us to be up here as a board. And someone asks us, "How is your district doing?", I'm gonna say, "We're doing just fine", and it's all because of you, and thank you for making our job easier, so. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I was looking at the trends from previous years, and it's so uplifting to see how throughout the years we've just been improving. And then for the other schools with other grades, like, I feel like that doesn't really reflect the work that the staff and the administrators put in, because I know from working in a school, that you all work really hard and put your hearts and souls into this, so I want to appreciate those other schools as well.
I've never been more proud, so thanks to all of you for your hard work. I've been on the board for, well, since 2009, and I've seen how, at the very beginning, how we were struggling and how far we've come, so wow, you know, it's great. And so thanks to all of you for your hard work, it's just incredible. I'm just so proud when people say, "Well, what board do you sit on?", Glendale Elementary. And it's just, you know, it's very, you know, people take notice, they really do, and I always tell them, you know, we're doing so well. And those schools that just missed being an A or just missed being a B, you'll be there, I know you will be.
President Martinez, if I may, also, and thank you for your comments governing board, but, you know, all, you know, we all want to be As, no doubt, but you have, what we understand here in Glendale is that we really want all of our students to be highly proficient, and the goal is to get them to highly proficient. And so I'm gonna get on my soapbox for a minute, and so with that, kids are moving, they're moving from mentally proficient and they're going to proficient and they're going to highly, kids are moving, that's what we want to see, and that continues to happen, and then you, when the, all the stars align, then you get to that A. And then as you see with Discovery, they're at the A, but they continue to grow, and that's what we want, because you're getting more kids into highly proficient, you're moving kids out of minimally proficient and partial and then proficient all the way through, that's important. But I want you to keep in mind also, and I was having conversations, so anybody that would listen to me lately on this, is that we, you know, we all talk about our funding, we need more money, our buildings, those things, and all that is important, and there's a lot of conversations about that, there's a lot of conversations about that with legislatures and at the Capitol. And one thing that needs to happen, in my opinion, you hear Mr. Barrigan and I use, and you'll see it in my report again tonight, arbitrary and capricious decisions being made with SFOB regarding funding. And next year, we do know that through Arizona Department of Education, that AASA is going to change. It's out for an RFP, and it's time for a new assessment. I think this is a time in which we need to be very vocal. I believe in accountability. There are some superintendents who not believe in the state accountability system. I believe that students have to be assessed, and I believe there needs to be a state assessment. I support that. What I struggle with, and I've always struggled with, is that the assessment tool that we use is arbitrary and capricious in ways. That's because when you have students, and here's how it's measured, you have to be here a full academic year. So you're here first day of school, and you're here until that test is administered. That's a full academic year for a student. We have students that come in who are English language learners. They come the first day of school, they're here for testing, and they still are learning English, but they are required to take this assessment. That is not right. Do I want English language, you know how I feel about English language learners, I'm the director of that program, I'm bilingual, I'm bilingual, I support that, but that is not fair to those students. That's arbitrary and capricious assessment they're using. There, why not test those students in their native language and see what they truly are capable of doing? And once our students do learn English, our ELL students do very well. You see that, you earn your ELL points. So to me, this is the opportunity, this is the time when the state is looking at the new assessments, we need to be vocal as administrators, as parents, as board members, as teachers about, give us an assessment tool that is fair and equitable to all students. And if you're not gonna do that, then do not compare me to districts that do not have English language learners, and do not say, "Public education, we're failing in public education." We are not failing in public education. In public education, we take every student. That's how the system is built, and that's how it should be. We do not discard students, we don't say, "Hey, you're not a fit anymore." It's wrong that we are assessing English language learners who have not mastered English, they're not proficient, and you are asking them to sit there and take an assessment that they don't even understand the language. And if it was so easy to be bilingual, we'd all be bilingual, and I'm gonna guarantee you, we're not. We're not. So I'm on my soapbox, but that's important, because this is an opportunity. I'm not making excuses for us, but if you look at where we're at, we're doing darn good. We're holding our own. We have districts out there that don't have the same, you know, economic disadvantages that our families do, or our students do, and our students are still performing, and that's because each of you sitting in those chairs do your job every single day, and it's hard work. And please know, you make a difference every single day. This governing board knows it, I know it, and I cannot be more proud of this work or this community. Keep it up, and we need to stand up and be strong about what this next assessment tool is gonna be. I get we live in an English-only state. Why, I don't know, sometimes I question that. But that needs to be changed, and the only way that can be changed is as voters, and we can get out and do that. Thank you for the time.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, hearing none, I will invite Ms. Segada-Jones to jump back on her soapbox for the superintendent's annual report.
Always my honor to serve as this superintendent of this incredible organization, truly is. Honored and blessed every single day that I come to work. So it's that time of the year where I present, if I know how to operate this, the annual superintendent's progress report. If you haven't been here when I've done that before, it goes from November of 2024 to November of 2025. So to me, the whole years are like a blur, because there's, it doesn't, it just keeps going. So that's what it is. As you know, this year, student, staff, family, community, great as GSD Connect Four, that has been, you know, our focus, and really, you know, the work that we just saw really speaks to this. Just for the governing board, these are some of the organizations and that that I present at and I belong to, just for a visual of that. Here takes me back to, you know, our opening day, and great things coming out of that opening day, and as we're halfway through this first semester, we've really been focusing on the Connect Four and what it means to be, you know, a GSD employee, and also the importance of it to mean, how do we connect to our communities? And I think we do a very good job of that, and you'll see that throughout this presentation. So goal number one is to improve student academic success and growth for all students. You see your district letter grade is A, you see our A schools, our B schools, our C schools. We have a school that's a PLC model, that's recognized nationally, that's Discovery. American and Burton are promising practice schools, and that is part of the work of the PLCs. GSD is a PLC model district, that's recognized nationally as well. We have Desert Spirit that exited the federal target assistance, that is because of the work that you're doing, and you're moving kids the way you need to. We have 100-plus teachers that attended state and our national professional development, and you see that, those practices in their classrooms every day. We had over 120-plus mosaic clubs and offerings that serviced over 1,100 students. I think a picture is, you know, is, really tells it best. You'll see some of the PLC recognitions, you'll see A schools in there, you'll see the PD that was attending, you see our preschool in the middle, they also attend PD outside. You see the governing board and yourself being recognized as a district with a PLC, that's quite an accomplishment to be recognized at the national level. Here you see what happens in classrooms every single day and what happens with mosaic clubs. We have those mosaic clubs that you've been out to performances, great, can be more proud of them. They've been asked to perform, you know, at different places in the state, and then we had some new things going on. I think esports was today, Mr. Hartzman had their first competition with classrooms, and that's a huge accomplishment for Challenger, can be more proud of them. Let's go to goal number two, that's be responsible stewards of people, time, and financial resources. So as you know, leading plaintiffs in the capital funding lawsuit favorable outcome for us, we have prevailed four times in capital-related court hearings. For 11 consecutive years, there has been no health insurance or insurance in this district, that's almost unheard of. Consecutive years of the Association of School Business Officials International Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Award for Annual Financial Report. And then we have four nominations for the ADE's Office of English Language Acquisition Services Teachers of the Year, because we have outstanding teachers. You can see our default ratings, even with the decline in enrollment, we still remain stable, and we have a prudent financial management while faced with these decline in enrollment circumstances we're in. We have reduced the cost of health vendors by just over $400,000 by hiring GSD employees, and that's huge for us. If you look at some of the things here, you know, we really want to promote things within the district with our wellness program, you know, we tried to launch the Healthy Heart, you guys, the governing board, so gracious to help me with that as well. We have our trust board there, who met last night, thank you to Ms. Wilson, who sits on that board and the work that you do and your leadership. Mr. Barrigan is, I believe, presenting at the Flynn Institute there and talking about, you know, he's the expert in finance, and he's always been asked to present. And then that visual there is, that's the lawsuit and SFOB that we, you know, constant reminders of, you know, what we continue to do and why it's so important to fight for our students, our staffs, and families. Attorney General, State of Arizona, I want to talk about that a little bit. Last week, I was with a group of superintendents and met with the Attorney General's office to talk about replacement. For us, it was, my focus was on replacement schools and replacement buildings. As you know, we have deficiencies, we have buildings that have outlived their useful life. The Attorney General was very responsive to us, she was unaware of some of the things, and so it was a great conversation, and her questions to us were, "What can I do?", and asking her attorney there, "What legal things can I do to help with that?". So it was a very promising conversation, so we'll see what happens. So that was a great, great, great conversation with the Attorney General. Goal number three is student and staff wellbeing. So we have Desert Spirit, Menzandick, our capturing kids, Heart's National Showcase Schools, congratulations to them. Desert Spirit is a Kiwanis K Club school, Smith is a leader in Me School, Kiwanis Club of Glendale, we have that Student of the Month, we see that, we have Kiwanis Inspiring Change of School of the Month, those are new initiatives that we've had. Gusto, Just Because Awards, we thank Gusto for being able to let us continue to recognize our staff and our students. We have SELL Student Ambassadors Initiative to help with our social-emotional learning programs in our schools. We have the Emergency Assistance Program, Housing Emergency Food Boxes, that happens. Desert Spirit and Smith are PBS awarded schools, that happened yesterday, congratulations to them, that's a great honor. We held the DEA Youth Summit at the System of Care. We do so many things to help our community and our students with suicide prevention, Red Ribbon, Healthy Heart, Breast Cancer Awareness Campaigns. We continue to be out there in the community promoting those things. 9,571 free meals served through our summer meal program, so we thank our summer meal program and our nutrition department, Ms. Lee, for the work that you do, so that our students have meals throughout the summer. There were 2,431 breakfasts served and 7,140 lunches served this past November to November. Here are some things that we, you know, are just proud to see what it looks like, you know, so many things that we're a part of, that's just because our teachers that are, have been recognized, it's just because our campaigns, our DEA Youth Summits, when we're out there for our STACK Group and SPAC and STACK Groups that come and promote for the district as well. And as you can see, the governing board, and I want to say that specifically to the audience, that you have a very visible governing board, and they're always out there, and they play a great role in the success of this organization. Goal number four, employee quality, attract and retain highly qualified staff who demonstrate GSD's shared values, and that is important to us. We just initiated a partnership with American Intercontinental University, we call it AIU, to offer master's and bachelor's degree programs for staff retention. We have currently, how that happens where, you know, on the district, is you can enter into this where your degree will be paid for, and then it's, there's a reimbursement process. We've been very, a unique way in which we've done it. We have one person that is in the doctorate, 21 masters, five bachelors, and four masters with alternative cert for education. This is offered to every employee in this district who can take part in this. Is there anybody in the audience taking part in this? Yes. Great. Maintain multiple discount programs and wellness benefits, and there's a fourth consecutive employee retention stipend, we've been able to do that from November to November. Here we, here again, it's just visuals, I think visuals say it all, you'll see, I think one thing that's very important to me that we recognize, and always support every employee group in this organization, and those are just some visuals of that. It's always nice to recognize all staff. Strategic goal number five, family and community partnerships, to promote positive interactions between our students, schools, homes, and community, that's the whole Connect Four, I think we do a very good job of that. We know that basic needs have to be met before students can perform academically, so this is a critical, critical goal for us. These are some of the highlights, you know, we do back-to-school shopping through the sponsorship of Kiwanis, 60-plus students get that, over 200 partnerships, you know, across the district. That just happened last week, Bullet Number Three, we sent in a $25,000 Legacy Foundation Grant, let me explain that to you, Ms. Hadigee and Mr. Parcells is back there. Legacy Foundation, BHHS, they have visited the System of Care, and they were very impressed with how we do our food distributions and everything that is offered there. They awarded us, it was their 25th anniversary of their foundation, and last week, they selected certain organizations to receive $25,000 grant, we were one of those organizations. So it's incredible, incredible. And so that money needs to go, to be used, and they call it a grant, and that money needs to be used to help with food boxes and that at the System of Care. They're very big on giving into, you know, helping the community through food distributions, and we will continue to do that. They also had given us a, awarded us a donation that we could have for our walk-in freezers so that we could have perishable foods in there, so they've been a huge supporter of us. System of Care, you see those things, you know, close to 8,000 have attended classes, we have over 51 community events, and, you know, close to 34,000 food boxes have been given. Those numbers are, and you're really high, you got, we do our tax returns, you know, that happen, that help with our employees. All the different resources that we have, the summer meals again, how many families we help through holiday assistance programs, we do the two community Thanksgiving meals, you know, that, that fall under this goal, we will do that again this year, you know, they'll be at Challenger and Landmark, and those, that is able to happen because of vendors have sponsored and donated to that. That is not out of district funds, that comes through donations. Those donations come to us because of the partnerships that we have built with them, and so we are very happy to be able to do that. You know, we participate in the Christmas parade, we do everything with Downtown Historic Merchants Association, where we celebrate the arts, they've been a great partner with us. Color Run, we do that through a partnership with Behavioral Health, that's a great event for us. a great event for us. You look at the Family Hub, that's just the hub itself. Over 300 workshops and programs, over 2,500 referrals for services, and over 2,000, or close to 2,200 parents are served out of that Family Hub that we have. We've launched marketing campaigns. We do the digital, traditional advertising, media outreach, and all enhances social media engagement, which is important. So you'll see here some of those highlights that we have. We have Kiwanis. We have our business partnership. Those, that's probably one of the funnest events, I think, that we do, because it gives us an opportunity to really thank all of our partners. They get a kick out of whatever theme it's going to be, and because of those partnerships, they continue to give to us. In particular, you know, the 25,000 we just got from Legacy, it's because of those partnerships, they come and see what we do. Wonderful, always to see the kids at Kohl's, that's a great. If you've never done that, please do that. It's great. There's a foundation when we received the 25,000 from Legacy. Here, again, all the events that are happening at System of Care. Whether we're doing, you know, a water drive, we work with the Salvation Army for that. We do all of our wellness things coming out of there. And you know, when we go with partnerships with Molina Health and Glendale Strong, we, at the beginning of the year, we're able to provide haircuts for kids at no cost. We do immunizations. We hold classes for our families and our students as well. Of course, every other week, we do a food distribution. Also, again, these are just the partnerships that we have with downtown Glendale. We always want to continue to build that relationship, and then again, you can see those events happening. Another key place of those partnerships, you know, we're always, we are down for the Day at the Capitol where our legislators, we have great support from our local legislatures, and we continue to build those relationships. Be able to grow as board as we travel to learn more about government, governance as a governing board through NSBA and ASBA. And then, really important to welcome new teachers when they come, you see that. And then really, Glendale Police Department is been a good partner with us, and that's the chief there. And then again, the social media. So you start at the top. That's the mailer that went home that helps advertise for us. We do mailers. We do the radio. You'll see, Comcast has been out. We do that. The other one is a digital advertisement that we do. You saw that we had a billboard that we did. We do the Glendale Star. We have actual media come out and do positive stories about, you know, Glendale Elementary School District. And I believe that one's at Burton, am I right? And then I did switch to Instagram, and so I'm trying to figure it all out. The other day, I deleted all my pictures. Didn't know what that was about, but, you know, I don't know. I just asked Odie and Carlos, hey, I don't have any more pictures anymore. But, so really trying to get out there about who we are and continue to brand this incredible district. So, for the 2025 school year, brings a focus for fostering an inclusive, engaging, supportive learning environment that prioritizes continuous improvement. It is about continuous improvement. You know, I've always said to you as leaders, you know, stay the course. Addressing declining enrollment by strengthening outreach, ensuring academic excellence through innovative learning opportunities. We see that through, and we'll continue to be innovative in what we're doing for our students. Mitigating chronic absenteeism by partnering with families, that's a big one for all of us. Everybody's doing a great job with that, and so it's a struggle, but we're doing that. And then ensuring long-term financial solvency by conducting a thorough review of all programs and operations, and that's what we do annually. Just some key takeaways. You know, we have three As. We really want to celebrate that and the work that they've done. They worked very hard. So congratulations, Discovery, Burton, and Challenger once again. The next one, I think a key takeaway is really AIU, and be able to offer that for our employees if they can get their degrees. That is huge for us, and we're very excited about that. And, you know, thriving partnerships with this, at the System of Care, we need to continue those partnerships. And so those, to me, are the big takeaways. Another key takeaway, obviously, the capital lawsuit victory was huge, and you don't have to play that video. I don't need to hear myself speak. You can listen to Mike if you want, but don't listen to me. Those are when we were interviewed, and that's a huge, huge takeaway for us, was winning that lawsuit. And then, I'm going to skip through that. And then, again, you know, we've success, you know, we've, that's it, six success GSD. Six consecutive years we have been voted the number-one school district in Glendale, and because we are the number-one school district and district. So applaud yourselves. That's incredible. And then I just want to end it with a little bit of, is this my humor slide? Someone tell me that. Is this my humor slide? It's my, I hope you get it, because some people, my own, where's my marketing people? My young'un back there. He saw it and told Odie, oh, that's really good. And Odie said, no, that was Cindy. See, he thinks I'm too old to be, you know, with it. So I am with it, because I have little grandkids that are with it. Here's some humor to end with. Come on, y'all. Six, seven. I have two little grandkids, one six, one seven, and they always tell me, no, no, we're six, seven, but then the other one turned eight, so now they're six, eight. So, you know, I'm going to start that, y'all. Six, eight, six, eight. But, you know, so what's next in 2026? Another incredible year, and I appreciate everything that you do. I truly do. You need to know that. And always, my honor to serve as your superintendent. Thank you so much. Questions you have for me?
What is, what is six, seven?
All I know is that they say this six, seven, and then all I know at Halloween, the coolest costume I saw, because I'm hip now, was two teenagers had Mylar balloons, and one was a six and one was a seven. I thought, now that was pretty innovative. I should have thought of that. Tomorrow's the sixth, seventh day of school. Oh, that'll be good. That'll be good. There you go. All right, I'm on it. Come on, you had to like that slide. All right, thank you so much.
I did, I did see an article, and it said it was going to explain as to where six, seven came from, and I chose not to read it, because I don't want to know. Any questions or comments from the board?
Should we proclaim six, seven day tomorrow?
No.
Encourage student attendance?
Nope, nope.
I just want to point out, this has been the best superintendent, you know, update that we've, I think that any one of us has ever been witness to.
My honor, thank you. My honor.
You know, we thank everybody, but let's thank Superintendent Sagata Jones.
Y'all still coming to work tomorrow. You can wear jeans, but you're coming to work. Thank you. Truly my honor to serve as your superintendent.
All right, with that, the hour is getting late, kids, so let's move this thing along. And Ms. Wilson, I believe you have to head out. We'll all sit here and watch you leave to make it awkward. Bye.
She can listen to the future meeting section as she walks out.
I expect you to watch the video on YouTube later. All right, so there are no action items for this evening, so Ms. Sagata Jones, future meetings and agenda items, or what's coming up soon?
On December 11, we will not have to do a revised budget. Mr. Barrigan, am I correct? Okay, that will not happen. We'll do the phase retirement, Ms. Valdez. That will happen. And then again, we will have to go into executive session for the superintendent's evaluation, because the deadline is December 18.
Okay. All right, any comments from the board? All right, we'll move on to the summary of current events, the superintendent report. Ms. Sagata Jones, do you have any icing to add on your cake?
No, I just want to say thank you to everybody for the work you do, but please have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Please take time for yourself and be safe.
All right, moving on to the governing board report. Mr. Hadamio, do you have anything to share with us today?
Since it's late, I'll be quick. I just feel joyful from seeing the student, the school grades, and the report from Superintendent Sagata Jones, so I'll end it on that.
All right, Ms. Bartels?
Ditto. And it's an honor to be part of that. I mean, every single one of us is working towards the end goal of seeing our kids find the success that we know they're capable of. And it's refreshing that people have stopped looking at challenges as a roadblock, but as a hurdle to be jumped, and I am very, very proud of this district for making that happen every single day. Thank you.
All right, since Ms. Pimentel is on the phone and currently recovering from surgeries, she has shared with me via text as to what she wanted to share, so I will read this in her voice, or pretend. "In this time of Thanksgiving, I'd like to thank our community for choosing to be part of the GSD family. So thank you to our superintendent Sagata Jones, our admin team, and especially our teachers and staff for everything you do for our students every day. Your tireless work is noticed by us, by our community, and it is an honor to serve our GSD familia with you all. Congratulations to Ulysses Montez for receiving the Azalas, Azalas?"
Azalas.
"Azalas de toda corazón award. You make a huge difference in our community, and I'm proud of you every day, and happy Thanksgiving to all." And thank you, Ms. Pimentel, for sharing those words with us. As for me, I just want to say happy Thanksgiving, everybody. It is, and I'm happy to share with everybody, it is my favorite time of the year, because I love cooking a lot of food. I love having family around. It has been a tumultuous year in my house, so I'm happy to bring everybody together and just have a good time, where there's really no expectations, other than not getting food poisoning by showing up to my house. I'm looking forward to volunteering at the Thanksgiving, we have two Thanksgiving dinners going on at the same time, so it's going to be a lot of fun. We're going to be kind of wrecked back there, giving ourselves carpal tunnel syndrome while spooning out huge heaping handfuls of stuffing and mashed potatoes and some turkey slices. We hope everybody can make it. If you know somebody, especially now, this is a time where there seem to be a lot of people in need. If you know somebody or a family in need, invite them out. Invite them to come to Thanksgiving with us. Invite them to share that time with us, and we'll have some extra special times to share with everybody. So thank you all for coming tonight. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.